Mr. What you call from?
Dave Burris.
Here.
Wes Grimes.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukin.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I invite everyone by conflict of interest if you have anything that you shouldn't be voting on to the council bill before you vote on particular items? The motion to approve the agenda with two changes. Under new business, item A repeat for another day, we'll remove that for tonight. That's going to need further clarification. Now we're ready to go on that. And what's brought our attention, that's probably your problem with the easement. So we'll get that clarified before we get back in front of you. And then we'd like to add a new business, item H. And this goes along with the letter I provided to the email from Kimberly Allen. So the new business item H would be a possible motion or discussion to authorize the historic preservation commission a letter of support for Kimberly Allen's grant request from the Deadwood Fund Program to complete exterior sandstone repairs on the former Perkins tile floor. Her request, her email that you have in front of you came to us a little late to officially get it on the agenda for tonight. I'm talking with the city's attorney today. We're not looking to expend any money. It's simply authorizing or asking the historic preservation commission to support Kimberly's request for this grant and what she wants to do to the building. So that's the reason for adding the new business item H. And Bill, you got that written down, so when we get there, you'll be ready to make motion on?
If I can read my writing, yes.
Alright. So the amended agenda will be item, new business item A, and add a new business item H. I entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda, remove item A, and adding item H under new business, email from Kimberly Allen.
Second.
Discussion?
Did I actually mention that the approval is needed for a grant deadline? That's why we're doing it so quickly without your stuff?
You did, but you didn't say that.
That might help us to understand why we're trying to do that.
But it is the new grant deadline.
When is the deadline? It's got to be, it's got to be back.
She's January 28th.
What?
January 28th. So the priors are our next council meeting. I've spoken with Brian Powers with historic preservation. If you folks need that way organization, they'll work with Kimberly to deal with her support on the show.
Yes, my thing is, why do we have to vote on just giving them a letter of support?
Why can't we just write it?
You know, like, the historic preservation folks would be the better ones to do that with. And I know we're in a situation where there's another group that may be asking for support from the city, a letter of support for a grant, or this one's for private individuals, that one's for city resources. And I just, I would prefer to be consistent in these kinds of things rather than miss it sometimes and somebody say, well, why didn't you do it for that one when you did it for this? So if we do it for all of them, then we're not going to be missed, we're not going to miss anybody.
I watch that.
I, on what they're doing, I just, I hate adding these things on the agenda at the last minute. And I know we're on a time stream, I get it.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of approving the amended agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The motion to approve amendments from the January 4th council meeting?
Make the motion to approve the amendments in January 4th council meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The motions approved, bills in agreement?
Make the motion to approve the bills in between $168,634.76.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims?
Second.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims of about $164,504.9 for an incident in the 2020 accounts payable for about $36,401.54. One second.
Discussion?
Just one question. On the very front page, you have a muffler prepared to be, we didn't do that in house? For Florida Democrats?
I think they bought a muffler. Is that a bit? So, so it's just five parts, it wasn't having some steel?
We can't hear, nothing through the mic, is that it?
I don't think too many people put mufflers for sixty-five.
That's why I was asking, I was just, I was asking about a muffler.
Back there, we all?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communications for the public, is Albert with us tonight?
Yeah, I'm sorry, he's not able to make it tonight. He called in to City Hall today, he's not feeling well, and he asked to place on the 216, and he did that.
Anyone else in the public who'd like to address the council? Alright, we'll move on to the council reportedly update from Shetco. Andrew, is that you?
Good evening, Mayor Bob, City Council. Can I bring one of your, can you bring me up back?
You want to put it back on that?
Oh, sure. As some of you remember, Shetco's been involved in a meatpacking cooperative since July, when they had their first meeting. They have four people, they are submitting for their nonprofit status. They acquired twelve acres, which was donated to them by the Travis Hartshorn family. They, they're submitting their articles of incorporation and paperwork for the state. The next steps include USDA inspection, hazardous materials application, and business plan. We have some funding options for the facility, the rural development for build out, and a tentative shareholder investor meeting will be scheduled for April 3rd. I was asked to join the board of a new nonprofit that's being formed, Operation Veterans in the Region of Town, otherwise known as OPVETS. And that organization will partner with the VA to address the holistic needs of veterans receiving services who rely on us, Veterans Administration. The other board members are Dr. Rich Gross, Pat Russell, Karen Madison, Mayor Bob Nelson, Greg Gunnwall, John Pence, Russ Gable, and John Sports and Blanks. We identified goals about that for early 21. Our bylaw review, articles of incorporation, startup funds, and the cultivation of working relationship with the VA. The incorporation was approved by the state as of January 8th. A number of goals have been identified in a long-range work plan, which was submitted to Secretary Wilkie in a meeting last year. As a member of the Board of Trustees for Western Dakota Technical Institute, we've been busy addressing aspects of strategic plan, as it's being written as part of their five-year cycle of renewal, and also as a part of separation from the Rattsey School District and the University Board of Regents. In addition, two additional certificate programs are being proposed through Western Dakota Tech. One is a proposal for a new meatpacking certification, and Dr. Bowman expects the rollout of that program in the fall of 2021. Shetco has submitted a letter of support for that program. Another program proposal is for physical therapist assistant, which is under review. I'm working with the school districts to present a virtual built-out of a roadshow. Some of you might have attended the roadshows we've had in the past, where all four tech schools have representatives that come down to the Neeler Center, talk about their programs, the full ride scholarship that is available in high-needs employment areas, and parents are always invited, invited, and that's a key factor, and often businesses are invited to in those high-needs areas. We can't do any of that this year, so the schools have offered to do a virtual roadshow during the regular school day. Building out of satellite campus in Hot Springs is one of the primary goals for Western Dakota Tech in 2021, so to that end, Dennis Fisher, who's the superintendent, and Troy Lerts, the principal, and I have met with Dr. Bowman and her faculty to discuss ways to partner for expansion of course delivery in the Southern Hills. And that could involve a number of different delivery means. It could be virtual, it could be having one of their instructors here, it could be having our instructors as certified CTE instructors, there's a number of different ways to do that. Hot Springs School District is meeting with architects to determine the best course of action, renovation, or new construction of a career in technology center to house the Western Dakota Tech program. And we appear marked the Workforce Education Grant as part of a potential funding package for the project. Shetco's been a member of the Rushmore Regional Alliance, which is a committee under the Western River Planning District, and their primary function has been marketing. This last fall, we decided to divide into two, we're still all one committee, but we have two subcommittees. One is Capacity Building Committee, and the other is Marketing Committee, of which I'm the head. Both of these committees have met, and we have a number of projects already in the hopper. Sometime in mid-spring, Rushmore Regional hosts a series of Addy workshops. You might remember that Janet Addy was here two falls ago in November. We had almost a hundred people here to see her present. She's an internationally known site selector organization, and she came to give our communities advice about how better to market themselves to site selectors. This next series of presentations will be probably in April. The spring workshop will be free to Rushmore Regional attendees, so you will all receive an invitation through Shetco to attend it. All others will have a $25 fee. The event will introduce the Economic Development Basic Course that will be offered through Black Hills State University this fall. Our goal is to have the basic course accredited by International Economic Development Corporation by 2022. Dates and details for all that are still to be determined. For several years, Rushmore Regional Alliance has advertised in the Sturgis Magazine. This year, we chose instead to advertise in the, for the stock show that's coming up here at the end of the month. We're going to be distributing our Rushmore Regional Alliance booklets in the packets to the vendors, so we will be marketing to the vendors, not the people who attend the show, because the vendors are those who might consider relocating here to do business. We'll let Rushmore Regional floor banners all over various rooms during the show, and if you're a membership, you should receive a hard copy of that via email. You will all receive that. I'm sorry, you'll receive a virtual copy, and I'll have hard copies in my office if you want one of those. The Economic Development Professionals Association, or EDPA, of South Dakota has been formed to help grow and diversify South Dakota's economy through professional development, networking, and advocacy. South Dakota is one of the few states that has never had an economic development professional group or statewide organization. The EDPA consists of lobbying, training, and organizational leadership, advocacy, and education. They seek funding at both founding levels and annual membership. They will elect a fifteen-member diversified board and seek nominations, and they will also seek committee board. Our annual banquet so far has been pushed back to the third Friday in April in hopes that we can all meet together. Dr. Bowman from Western Dakota Tech will be our guest speaker that evening, and we might push it further back if we still can't meet in person. It's not much fun to have a virtual banquet. I'm busy revamping the website, and I'm also gathering all the commercial properties in Fall River County and listing them on the state's Governor's Office of Economic Development website. Any questions? Wow, you've been busy. Thank you. Oh, one other, right? J.R. and I have been talking about just off the cuff potential funding for some sort of a business bar or industrial site, and I've gathered the three sources that I have. One of them is a grant through the Governor's Office of Economic Development. They'll do a 50% match for all of the infrastructure. You probably, some of you probably know that the Department of Transportation also has a grant strictly for roads. They will do 60% of the funding with a $400,000 ceiling. So it seems to me that the GOED funding might be a better way to go if this should ever be a need. Another potential source is Black Hills Energy, and they prefer a very, very specific project. Any questions about that?
What do you, what do you mean by specific project?
Well, they prefer to do something like... What I, I can't tell you, but I would say something specific would be something like the wiring, or putting in the energy sources, something like that. It's very, very bad.
Like bringing in poles, three-phase stuff like that?
Yeah, 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 thank you. Whereas the other two that I'm aware of right now are both for infrastructure. One is all the infrastructure, GOED is all the infrastructure, and DOT is specifically roads, which can't always match, so you can't have 50% of it funded by GOED and the other 50% by Department of Transportation.
Andrew? I do have a question about one of the other items you talked about.
Sure.
Western Dakota Boats Act partnering with the Hot Springs School System. Are those the traditionally two-year programs that they're talking about and bringing them into the school system?
They have a variety of programs, some of them are nine months, some of them are one year, and then the associate's degree is a two-year program, so it all depends on what you're willing to lend to. Nursing is a one-year program plus one summer semester, and the interesting thing about nursing and healthcare is one of our biggest, it is our biggest employer, between Fall River at this point, but you need $2 million just in equipment for an LPN startup program. That's what they've done their white line. Did I answer your question, Bob?
Yes, and this is an effort to provide the high school students with something other than their traditional four-year college way to a job.
Absolutely, absolutely. It will be specifically the types of programs that are offered at our technical colleges. And Western Dakota Tech will become a technical college.
Is Western Dakota Tech finding that there are more students that want to go that route?
Oh, yes. At our last board meeting, they've increased over the past four years from around 800 full-time students to 1,400. Yeah, it's crazy, it's crazy good.
Alright, thank you. Let's move on to personnel action. Make a motion to approve personnel actions, A, at the... Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
As long as we're talking about personnel, I guess, I got a question. Where are we at in the Don't Catch Position?
Chief Close is still looking at the applications. His hope is to have something in front of council. Should I ask council here? Okay. Onto ordinances. Order is A, a second reading of ordinance 1223.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1223, an ordinance transferring 22 lots in the Golden Falls addition from rural service district to urban service district.
Second. Discussion? Mr. What you call from the roll, please?
David Burris.
Yes.
Wes Grimes.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner. Yes, thank you.
Motion passes. Motion on the work side will be a first reading of ordinance 1224.
Make the motion on ordinance 1224, an ordinance revisiting Title III Administration, Chapter 35, Economic Development, Business Improvement, 35.31, Purpose.
Second. Discussion? Mr. What you call from the roll, please?
David Burris.
Yes.
Wes Grimes.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Last ordinance item, item C, a first reading of ordinance 1225.
I'll make a motion on ordinance 1225, an ordinance revisiting Title III Administration, Chapter 33, Police Department, Prisoners, 33.05, Working Prisoners.
Second. Discussion?
All these lines that's crossed out, we're doing away with, right?
Yes.
So there really isn't enough to... No, I mean, there's no other wordy. Kind of my question, too, is there nothing?
Only that section of the existing ordinance is being changed, so all other sections of the ordinance remain in place, only that change is to the sections 33 and 35.
Okay.
Any other questions? What you call from the roll, please?
David Burris.
Yes.
Wes Grimes.
Yes.
J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. On the new business, item A was renewed, takes us to new business, item B. Possible motion discussion to approve the updated airport private air construction guidelines.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated airport private air construction guidelines.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item C, possible motion discussion to renew the municipal operating agreements on alcoholic beverage.
I'll make a motion to renew the municipal operating agreements for alcoholic beverage license for Good Karma Couture LLC versus C's RV.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, a possible motion discussion to approve or renew the Southern Hills Golf Course Toro Irrigation Controller Support Agreement.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the Southern Hills Golf Course Toro NSN Irrigation Control Support Network Essentials, 36-month service agreement and extended warranty.
Second. Discussion?
Is that going to raise the price of what was, we put in the budget, a certain amount for this as an extended warranty? Going to raise the price of what you put down, or is that with it?
It raises the cost by $56. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item D, possible motion discussion to help run as a city administrator to accept change order number two.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to accept change order number two for an additional 1,000 in night construction, for the addition of four type three flexible object markers at $2.50 each, project number VRO 80240018-1, PCN 06BF, AKA jetting bridge replacement.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, could I ask what those are?
Yeah.
What exactly are they?
They're the pliable paracaves that go on the end of guardrails. Going to get a guardrail, I think, to show you the thought.
Those were never figured in originally?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item F, a possible motion discussion to set a public hearing on February 1st to 2021 at 7:25 PM for alcoholic beverage license application from Springs Hotels LLC, DVA, Springs Coffee Kiosk for retail on-off sale of malt beverage, and Southern Dakota Farm Life Wine License, I repeat, to be used at 602 Sulphur Street, Street. Second motion. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business item G, possible motion discussion, or discussion to approve travel training request from Philip Scheidle.
I'll make a motion to approve travel and training request from Philip Scheidle, police officer, to attend the SDE LET instructor development training in Rabbit City from February 8th to February 12th.
Second. Discussion?
Can I ask what that training is?
I think there's an explanation on the application, and I can read from that. It's to develop his skills as an instructor. It's interactive and designed to prepare me to determine training needs, and then develop, implement, and evaluate meaningful firearms training for the police department. I'll be learning what is key to focus on for Chinese and how to prepare for these opportunities.
Did we not previously set a different officer for training for the same thing? Why, can they know what we're providing?
We're expanding our training. Feel better than that.
So it's not that they can't, it's free training, so we have redundancy?
Feel better than that.
So it's not that they can't, it's free training, so we have redundancy?
I would point out, too, he's driving a city vehicle and the training has been no cost in South Dakota. But I don't think he's got to be certified. Am I right?
Just his wages or minimum annual cost.
Correct.
He's not certified yet.
No, he's not. You don't expect him to be certified.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to commedary remarks.
Item A.
Well, thank you. Item P.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to authorize the Historic Preservation Commission. Yep.
If we're right.
Don't think we were going to have this problem. To authorize the Historic Preservation Commission to write a letter of support for Kimberly Alley's grant requests from the Deadwood Fund Program to complete exterior sandstone repairs for the Fargo Mercantile Building.
Okay. Discussion? To Wes's concern about, and bringing it in front of you on such short notice, I read through Kimberly's email, there are two deadlines that are actually referenced. The official deadline to the Deadwood folks is February first, so that she can have her paperwork ready, and to them, she's asking for something from us on January twentieth. She didn't know the process that's necessary to get these things in front of council and get your approval for them. So she made the request as soon as she knew that a letter of support from a governing body would be helpful for her request. I agree with Wes. This is awkward, that's why we asked the attorney this morning if there was anything that would get us in serious trouble, and again, because we're not spending any funds. It's not expected to be a terribly controversial topic. Our sandstone heritage is important to us, this individual wants to step up, she and her husband take care of one of our buildings. I felt it was appropriate, and then we should take the chance of meeting in front of you and see how it feel like. That's the reason for the short notice.
And I don't have a problem with that. I commend him, I do, because I'm glad if somebody's going to do something for one of the buildings, I just, I think it's a shame that we have to vote to give our support. We should automatically, as a city, we should support anyone with a valid business to kind of put in here. But I understand that the liturgy wants some uniform for everyone that comes before the council, so I understand that.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now, I agree with you. Administrator, Frank, that's Dana.
Our next meeting is February first at one PM at the Miller's Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport advisory, Bill?
The next airport advisory committee is Thursday, January twenty-eighth, eight AM at the airport. But I would like to take this opportunity to answer a question that was raised at the last meeting. And Wes, I appreciate you asking the question. And the question had to do with, can we use the new city hangar as a commercial space? Because the perception is that was, was built to house the seat or fire plane, seat and single-engine air tanker. And so we went out to look for the real answer, and I think we got the real answer, so I wanted to provide that. And a little background, I think the seat utilizing it to house the seat planes may have been a justification to build it, but it was never put in as part of the special conditions for the grant. So that's the short answer, but I want to give the long answer now to get everything out in front of the entire council and the public. So, again, and pardon me for reading this whole thing, but concerns have been expressed that the special conditions associated with the grants for the construction of the hangar required that the space be dedicated for the regional seat or single-engine air tanker plane or fire planes. A review of the grant agreements and the associated grant assurances reveal no such stipulations. This assessment has been validated by John Becker of the South Dakota Department of Transportation Office of Air Rail and Transit. Complying with the special conditions and assurances of the project grants, the hangar must be used as a revenue-producing hangar. The hangar space must be rented to aeronautical tenants. Feeding and rental structures in the lease agreements will make the airport as self-sustaining as possible. The facilities of the airport are to be made available to the public on reasonable terms without unjust discrimination, and the lease will preserve the sponsor's compliance with federal obligations. Lots of words. When we started doing the research, John Becker with the South Dakota DOT also reached out to Alvin McLeod with the FAA to seek their opinion on the subject. And in an email response dated January seventh, Mr. McLeod stated that as long as it is used for aeronautical purposes, it should be fine. But we at the FAA would like to see the lease agreement before anything is taking place to make sure of proper measures, so. And I think that's fair, to be able to have them take a look at it. And again, because of the, so much discussion about the seat planes, Ivan Van, the airport manager, reached out, and we've had phone discussions with Raymond Bu, the South Dakota, State of South Dakota, Department of Agriculture, Wildland Fire Division Fire Management Officer, State Fire Aviation Officer, Rapid City Field Office. And we also had face discussions with Anthony Griscow, the seat VOC manager of the same office. And those discussions have revealed that there are no written or verbal storage agreements in place. And so given that there's no restrictions in the grant documents, no agreements in place regarding the storage of seat planes, we don't see that the seat planes present an issue or a barrier to developing a potential commercial lease agreement in the city hangar. So we think we've run it to ground. Good question, Wes. So if it makes sense to lease out part of that big hangar to a commercial client, then there's certainly nothing in the, in the grant application or any other pre-existing agreements that would keep us from doing that. So I think we're good to go if it's still the right answer to do. So thanks.
Thank you for your research. Any other questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Pastor Paul River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
I'll have my notes ready next week.
All right. Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
The meeting was called the Order of January fifth by the Miller Center. Present were Brian Powers, Luke Royal, Brian Topper, Steve Wiener, Joe Muller, Kira Hagan. Also attending were Mayor Bob Nelson, Scott Sogi, and Deborah Johnston. The minutes for the December second meeting were read and approved, including Adam Foul. An application for certification of appropriateness for a sign at Seven Twelve University was discussed and conditionally approved based upon a multiple vacant seconded by Millens. The approval was for the sign only and not for lighting or additional barber pole or the electric power dome. Mr. Sogi was directed to work with the lot store owners to discuss those issues and let them know that the approval does not extend to the matters which are not in the application. And to secure an application for whatever additional work they want to perform. Further, Mr. Sogi is to work with the owner to try to minimize damage to the sandstone from the mounting of the sign. The terms of the commissioners were discussed, all commissioners whose terms expired in twenty twenty agreed to serve again. Mayor Nelson must make those nominations to the council, who is tasked with approving the membership of the commission. Mayor Nelson reported on the city's commitment to historical preservation and efforts to put some teeth into the enforcement mechanism. He is speaking with the city attorney to discuss enforcement and how to take advantage of the constructive demolition to neglect provisions in the state statute. The intent of the city and the commission is that vacant property owners be held responsible for the condition of their properties and that they be prohibited from allowing the properties to suffer damage through neglect. When the commission meets to discuss changes to the historic ordinance, it will incorporate by reference into the historic ordinance the various city ordinances pertaining to vacancy maintenance and the like to assist in the preservation of the historic structures. The commission has formed an ad hoc committee to discuss changes to the ordinance and other matters pertaining to historic preservation in Hot Springs. All citizens or other interested parties will be invited to again. The first meeting of this committee was Thursday, January fourteenth, from noon to two here at the Miller Center. Ms. Johnston brought a new publication from the State Archaeological Research Council about the city of Castade. This publication is available to the public at cost of ten dollars. To secure a topic, contact the shell, pictured at six oh five, three nine four, one nine three six. Mayor Nelson also reported on the status of the West Oak building. The council voted to demolish the structure and has invited requests for proposals for demolition. One of the conditions of the job is to save the sandstone from the structure to be used in other projects such as the new suspended sidewalk. There is an alternate request for its proposal to demolish but save the front side. There will be a walk, there was a walkthrough of the building for those interested in bidding, which was, which happened January eleventh. The deadline for the bid is February tenth. Meeting adjourned at six PM. The next meeting is Wednesday, February third, five PM at Miller Center.
Any questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisor, Larry?
The Evans Plunge Advisor Committee meeting began at twelve noon. In attendance were Chris Hanson, Joshua Johnson, Tom Nads, Allison Erbosh, Kathy Friend, Sandy Ferguson, Welcome to Board Member Troy Lerts, representative for Hot Springs School District. Public comments, no representatives from the public were present. EPAC followed up from last month, first out of the Department of Health Statistics. Just think of. Can you hear me, OPAC? Fall River County is still experiencing community spread, January twenty, twenty-one, marginal level, sub, marginal level. Subsequently, the health club will remain closed. This will be reevaluated at the next EPAC meeting in February based upon South Dakota public, public health, public data at that time. Resuming classes at the, at the Plunge. Beginning January twenty-third, classes will resume. Class size will be limited to people to accommodate social distancing. Classes include water aerobics, AM, AAM, AM, and PM. Spinning and Zumba. In addition to B A's recreation directors planning to begin special water exercise classes soon on Thursday at seven and eight AM, that will include PTSD program participants. Corporate memberships, twenty percent discount memberships will be offered to businesses that can administer enrollment, which is improving payroll deduction process. And is open to any size business that meets, meets this criteria. Plunge pop will be issued to participants. Alternately, businesses may purchase punch card thirty, fifty, or a hundred count with company check and receive same twenty percent discount. Designating employees that are not participating will be issued pop that will draw from the visible available corporate punch card total. EPAC will consider recording a family participation option through payroll deduction in October twenty twenty-one. Discounted punch cards for local lodging vendors. Per request of a local lodging vendor, a similar twenty percent corporate discount will be offered. The participating vendor may purchase punch card thirty, fifty, or a hundred count with a company check and receive the discount. The local business will then provide each qualifying guest a signed and dated business card or receipt, one card or receipt per person for a four-plunge pass redemption. Verified individual vendor authorized business card recipient holder will draw from the available vendor's punch card total. Update on RFPs for Health Club renovation project. Evans Plunge has solicited an RFP for tile set, a proposal due on before January eighteenth. The EPAC committee confirmed the wavy tile and wood materials were recommended by Tom Nads, as has been previously examined and discussed. In-house demolition activities are scheduled to begin in February. Reconstruction of the warm mineral pools, not hot, hot jobs anymore, occurred during the facility's annual two-week maintenance shutdown, scheduled for March first through the fourteenth. Other committee member items. One, reupholstering work had begun, thirteen pieces of weight room equipment. This work is being, is being performed by a local provider. The upholstered seats and benches, benches will include new high-density foam. In addition, the equipment bases are being painted. Weight room upholstery was last updated in twenty fifteen, too. Preliminary discussion began about creating a combined resource opportunity with the Hot Springs school system. And Evans Plunge to introduce first aid and life support training classes as part of physical education curriculum. We are very excited about this potential opportunity. Next meeting, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one, noon at Evans Plunge. I don't have a time limit.
Any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Parks, Recreation, Renovation, Wes?
Yeah, we had a meeting Wednesday, January sixth. Some of our new business items, we were, I guess, informed by Lori. This is a Latin word, I believe she's, she is the sexton for the library or the cemetery. I believe the Latin terminology is she is basically the signer of, the keeper of the people's remains. Kind of made that up, I don't know what the actual terminology is. She is, she is the actual receiver, I guess, is what she told us. She also told us she's working with GPS, trying to get some mapping done. We do have a lot of notables in our cemetery, so I think it's a great idea, because I think it'd be kind of neat if you can go to your GPS and you can find out who's in our cemetery. She wants to do a little update on overall map information. Her, Kath Friend, from Recreation Department, and her program for twenty-one is Get Your Elf On. She said things are going good, I guess, no problems there. We went through the true green, lawn chemical agreement. The committee, I believe, come to the conclusion we need to just go ahead and recommend to the council that we move forward with their proposal. In the parks, Lori informed us that the doggy bags have been, the doggy bag holders were completed. They're still working on the street lights, and we purchased about ten bulbs for the lights. Chautauqua Parks, we discussed the spring bolt box, some fill placement, a friend of. Because it's the upper park. So Channel Park, the channel work is still an ongoing process. We discussed damages to the grass areas and repairs, I guess we're planning for the spring to get everything ready for Gerald's. Parts of crafts, make sure it's all ready for, for his group. And we discussed uniform locks in the city for all the, all the different entities and stuff. Perkside Park, we discussed the sprinkler project. Perkside Park, we discussed the sprinkler project. The low hanging trees around the river needs to be, they need to be marked so we can get them taken care of when we start building trees again. School Street Park, we discussed the playground equipment, especially the merry-go-round and the falls on the plan and wild plot improvements on the hillside. Miller Center, we discussed a R F P for the vendor bidding. The depot, we're still waiting on some bids, I believe, for some electrical panel replacement project. And we had a little discussion about seasonal first maintenance, routine, setting up a schedule. That was about it.
Any questions?
Those balls Wes was talking about, for the softball baseball field up at.
The big ones. The big lights.
Well, not the ones at the baseball field, smaller field.
The ones on the green big.
They might be pretty good sized lights, but they're not the, they're not the Legion field, it's the other field.
Oh, it's the other field?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I guess I, I don't know which field's the which up there.
Do you recall what Lori called the containers for the documents?
I don't, I don't remember the correct terminology.
Who cares?
Who cans? Oh, yeah.
I, I like the sound of it, it's a, 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 a share. They're, they're making about a three or four inch.
P V Z.
Capes on, so they kind of look like cannons, so they're called the who cans.
It's where you get your baggies.
Thank you, Wes. My name is Zoni, Caitlin.
We meet tomorrow night at six P M at the Miller Civic Center.
Thank you. Public Safety, Phil and J R?
Public Safety meeting is moved from Wednesday to Thursday, the twenty-first, here at Miller Center, one P M.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave Crain?
Last Public Works meeting was January the twelfth, and it was attended by Vaughn Nelson, Greg Brody, Dan Johnston, John Gregory, Wes Grimes, and myself. I'm not going to go through the whole sheet, it'll be here for quite some time, but touching on different things. City plowing and priority streets map and secondary alley determination process, we're doing that as of now. We also touched on a few parking issues with certain, I won't say their names, but certain people here in town. Those were, those were all initiated and taken care of, had, had a discussion with the personnel. We had a, convert one part-time employee to a full-time employee and Billy still feels that he might need one part-time person, but moving a employee backwards. See what else we got. Extended underdeveloped Jennings Avenue to Twenty-Fifth Street, reference roadie residence requesting two loads of stone to get them through the winter time, and that's been taken care of. Received a check for two thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents from Pacific Steel. That's actually a pretty good amount for the cost, cost line for what recycled steel was at the time. Utilities, we have a pump ordered for Evans Pump Station pump replacement, and we did think that we could have Crane on standby, but it was moved out that it would be ready when we were ready. We also will have a, like, repair list from D N R and W W T V, immediate repairs of pumps for plumbing and digestive milling. We have an electrical panel that needs to be replaced, and we are waiting on three bids on that. Let's see what else. We have the golf course, B R V repair and place at the golf course. We are just waiting on the delivery at this point in time. Replacement, some of you are cold in here. Replacement and upgrade geothermal primary circulation pump for the Mueller Civic Center. It has a five horse pump that circulates all the water through all the system. We're going to upgrade it to a six to an eight horsepower pump, and that is in, in, in taking place as we speak, we're getting prices. Let's see, moving on, code enforcement. The vacant alley at city property for the memory property transferred to Richard Allstate, that will be a vote on the first of February. R F P, street light maintenance for a three-year contract. The response is due by February the tenth. The brush file was discussed. Global task team and members with scheduling of events. We're gathering all the information we can from the hospital, the senior living center, the different businesses that are close by that way, and working with the fire department and also Fall River Fire Rescue. There's a whole bunch that are working together as a team so we can do the same thing that we did last year, pending the weather. And always keep that in mind, that weather is pending for that. Just because we give a date, it could always change. Let's see. N C S damages, this would be for twenty twenty, the repair list has been completed and approved by Billy Morrow for Bowman West. This is for the last season, if they were doing the lines, any damages done in our parks, anywhere in our city, private citizens of their properties, all that list has been taken care of. Now, we have not started on twenty twenty-one, so that list will be coming up, and if anybody's interested towards springtime, we will see where that list takes us. At this point, that, that will be it. Now, my next meeting will be going by being transferred to twelve, is that going to be the twenty-sixth? Or is it going to be next?
It'll be next, dude.
Yeah, it's due, okay. Well, we need to cancel and reschedule, I think that's, that's. Craig, you have anything you want to add?
I do, but it's, I think it's something different than asked. New Business A, I think, should be put on Public Works to discuss. I was going to tell you before the meeting, it's over anymore.
The, well, nothing's deleted?
No, New Business A, that we put on hold.
Yeah, that would be one we don't need here tonight. Okay. We'll have a slight discussion about that. Well, I want to, I want to be a part of that. Any, any questions? For David or Craig? Craig, you want to answer?
No. All right. Matter of fact, yeah, it's something we never talked about.
Southern Hills Economic Development, John, J R?
Yeah, Andre gave us a report tonight, quarterly report, I don't know.
And the Golf Course Advisory Committee is meeting while they're, uh, buying seats. Takes to Finance Officer, Mr.?
Thank you, Matt. Um, good. Golf course is actively looking for replacement parts for the six parts, and so expect that were stolen in October, so expect something on my next agenda, discussing a replacement of those parts. Finance offices worked with various department heads and have completed the year-end twenty twenty inventories. We saw large decreases in water and wastewater, as you'll remember from last year's audit, we discussed separating supplies on hand from actual inventory assets, which would be defined as items to be used or consumed in the next twelve to twenty-four months. So those large decreases in their inventory assets result in expenses reported for the year. But now we have a more accurate reflection of actual inventory assets on our financials for those two departments. You approved another accounts payable batch. I imagine it's smaller than the last, so I imagine the next one will be smaller, and hopefully that first meeting in February will be our last. I did a analysis of the airport fuel inventory and provided a summary since purchase. Uh, the value of inventory on hand at the end of the year exceeds twenty-four thousand dollars. Fuel sales in twenty twenty were sixty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. There's a cost of goods sold that's used with an average price per gallon, and when I take off the cost of goods sold, we had a profit in twenty twenty of twenty-one thousand six hundred and four dollars. We had eight thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars in profits for twenty nineteen, so in total, so far, for the system, uh, we have profited twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. We did incur adding fueling, added fueling system expenses this year. When I add those to the original cost of the system, we have an investment of thirty-two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Quick math, we only need to generate an additional twenty-six hundred dollars of revenue in order to become revenue positive or have a revenue generating function at our airport, at our airport fuel sales. So, um, famously, just got that purchase in May twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and have continued to grow the system, having to replace the software and have that significant added expense, we're not going to do that, so that's good news. We are preparing for the twenty twenty-one election. Sounds kind of early, but we do need to publish notice of vacancies twice between the first of March, um, no, fifteenth of February and the first of March. We have four two-year terms, if you remember, the council approved to combine with the school. They have three, three-year terms and one two-year term, so we both have a number of seats to fill. I'll have more information in my next update regarding the seats available. We did receive the time tracking module that was approved for the twenty twenty-one budget for the city. That comes from our software provider, Van Henn. We're going to roll that out slowly as we start to implement it in different areas of the city. We have eight different areas that we identified would need this software installed in order to help with our payroll processing, so we're excited to do that, but we're going to roll that out slowly and make sure that we get something that works for everybody, and that's one of the reasons we chose this product, this product, because it has some flexibility. Uh, the final laptops for the council were received, they're getting set up. We'll schedule a meeting soon to review use for those that are interested. Uh, our I T professionals have agreed to facilitate and help with that. We're working on ordinance revisions, there are two more at this meeting. We've got a couple left on our list of pending ordinance revisions, and we've chosen to tackle those one at a time. The residential tax rebate, pre-approval for the first whole home property was received, and we're working through and learning the process, because this would be the very first that we've received in the finance office for that tax rebate. We have asked if that be one of the ordinances that's being reviewed by planning, or council revisions, to make sure it's going to work best for what we, what we developed it for. The finance office is still looking for administrative assistant applicants. I did choose to put an ad in the paper for three weeks. It is now listed on the South Dakota Works Jobseeker Services site, and we have rearranged city halls to provide some room upfront for that third person. That's going to be a big job, and I'm really excited for the person to start, but I'm wanting to make sure that we get some good applicants and we choose the right person for the job, so we're not going to move that one too quickly either. We're going to slow roll and take as much time as it takes. The next meeting will be February first, but I'd like to point out that the second meeting in February is similar to this month, it's a holiday, the fifteenth is President's Day, so our second meeting in February will be on Tuesday the sixteenth. And just wanted to let you know, uh, next week I'll be off the twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, so if you need anything from me on those days, I won't be there.
Any questions, Mr.?
I have a question.
Yeah.
With the all parts, is our insurance going to pay to replace them totally, or just what they're worth when they are stolen?
Our insurance already settled on that. We got twenty thousand eight hundred from our insurer. We had to buy out of these, uh, six of the carts, that cost us a little over seven, quite almost eight thousand, seven hundred, or seven thousand and eight hundred or something. So we had about thirteen thousand or thirteen thousand remaining to purchase new parts, so we, we will need additional funds to purchase replacement parts.
Any other questions, Mr.? Thank you, Mr.? John, City Administrator Report?
Okay, it's been busy again, the South Dakota Department of Transportation discussion concluded a discussion about on-street parking spaces before and after the road construction. It looked like a scary number to begin with, when we saw the number of spaces we were losing, and we went out and actually counted, we weren't really losing that many, we were actually gaining some, and there's plan revisions going on now, to add some more angle parking spaces on the south end of town, some more parallel spaces on the north end of town, but I think it's all about a battle about what we're discussing here. We discussed on-street parking in the right-of-way, we've got an old restaurant in Sherman Street. Committed that section according to the right-of-way agreement we have with the D O T, becomes an issue for snowplowing. We had our first discussion about wayfinding signage, we've been moving forward with that because of the practice that holds the wayfinding signage on part of the D O T highway project on the light poles, we'll have to buy the signs. We also talked about the green space in front of Big Bass, this is a new green space right-of-way acquisition, redesign. Heat Hot Springs is beautiful, and we've agreed to take care of that area and come up with a really nice plan for that area to be shared with the council and Labor Day, got tentative approval from the D O T. Our streets, parks, maintenance, and utilities departments, got Christmas ornaments down, uh, they worked more on the cattail removal with Deansworth, replaced the bothered light at Evans Point, we have not built a plate more than eight. They helped standard construction in this transition, we're getting to replace the garbage cans out. Like, there's a purchase prepared for the Evans Pump Station pump replacement. Four and out pump will be pulled, barring, a new pump will be moved along the other street. Today, they're working on required quarterly water quality testing. Miller Center's been busy again, they got a flood donation event that was well-attended, and they're also setting up a COVID vaccination center for Fall River Health, and they had a good Fall River Historical Conference here this past weekend, it was informative and well-attended. Our Office of Development Coordinator beginning its notifications of parking violations. Most people are quick to comply, so we're not quite as quick. We're continuing to look at nuisance property concerns in the intersection right-of-lays, culminars, and alleys where we have visibility issues. Lot of greenery, and some tree limbs need to be cut by. We'll be notifying owners of those properties as we move forward with sections or sale. We had the West Oak, R F P walkthrough of the building for the responsible vendors, we had four vendors that did that event. We also got some information and plans for a new retail business that's coming to town, we're excited about that, we'll be announcing where it's going to move forward. Had an airport compliance review with our D N R, which included spill, which counteragent plant update. I mean, it worked on inventory, equipment inventory surplus, and we'll continue some more discussions about commercial tenant. And the update of the private hangar construction guidelines. Lastly, Evans Plunge continues with a split schedule, six A M. to one P M., four P M. and seven P M., Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, ten to six on Saturday and Sunday. We're excited to have Troy Lurk with, joining EPAC, he is a representative of Hot Springs.
Any questions for John? All right. Farmer Health System will begin providing COVID Fall River Health Systems will begin providing COVID vaccinations to anyone eighty years old and older this Thursday, January twenty-first, from three PM to seven PM at the Miller Civic Center. They will continue to provide vaccinations on Friday, January twenty-second, from nine AM to one PM. If you or your loved ones are eighty years old or older, please contact Fall River Health System at seven four five eight nine one zero and select option nine to make your appointment for future dates. I want to thank the council for agreeing to allow, uh, Fall River Health Systems to use the Miller Center, Civic Center, no charge to vaccinate the public. But again, uh, beginning on Thursday, January twenty-first, from three PM to seven PM at the Miller Civic Center. Anyone eighty years or older will be able to begin, uh, receiving their vaccinations. Uh, that will continue on Friday, January twenty-second, from nine AM to one PM. Again, anyone that's eighty years or older, uh, please call Fall River Health Systems at seven four five eight nine one zero and select option nine to make your future appointments. John just mentioned Troy Lurz. Lurz with, uh, will be replacing Greg Menwall on the Evans Plunge Advisory Board. Troy is currently, uh, the Hop Springs Secondary Principal, anxious to be a member of the Evans Plunge Advisory Board. And Troy will bring, uh, an important school-related perspective to the board. I'll be sending the council codes of conduct for the mayor and the council for your consideration. Codes of conduct have been off or on and off I am for past councils with members in favor of them and members opposed to them. Had an opportunity to re-acquire a version of the code of conduct for mayor and realize there are some things that I can do better. As a city, we have an abundance of codes, regulations, and ordinances that tell our residents how they should behave and an employee personnel manual that tells them, uh, what's expected of them. So as mayor and council, I believe it's important we have codes of conduct to help us remember and influence how we represent our constituents and the city of Hop Springs. I'm also asking the finance committee to add the codes of conduct to their February one agenda for discussion. My hope is to have the codes of conduct before the council for your February sixteenth council meeting. Any questions for me? All right. If not, we have motion to go into executive session. Please make a motion, we go into executive session for SDC one dash twenty-five dash two dash three later.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's take the five minute break before we convene an executive session and there will be no action after executive session.